All right, thank you, and welcome to the January City Council meeting for the city of Russellville. We've come to order, and we will be led, our invocation, by Reverend Roy Smith from First Methodist Church, and we'll follow that with a pledge to the flag. If you'll all please rise.
I advise your prayers to be taken. Our gracious God, we give you thanks for this day, for all the many opportunities that you have presented for us, and now we come to this place. We're grateful on the eve of what is a great gift that America celebrates, and that is the peaceful transition of power. Help us to recognize in that the kind of values that we hold as a people, and may we seek to make them alive and well in this community. We thank you for these city council members who have offered themselves to provide leadership to our community. We thank you for these citizens who gather, for together we can make this place the kind of community that you are proud of, and that is our hope and our dream. May you give us the wisdom to do so. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic towards its saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Thank you, Pastor. Everyone be seated. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Mr. Westcott?
Here.
Mr. Wiley?
Here.
Mr. Sims?
Here.
Mr. George?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Tripp?
Here.
We have a forum.
All right, a forum's declared. Counsel, in your package you received minutes from the December 15th, 2016, and the special call meeting on January 3rd of 2017. If there's no corrections or changes, I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Financial report, Mr. McCoy.
Financial report for December 31st. General revenues were $983,465, 3.61 percent above our year-to-date projections. Sales tax receipts were $772,982. Franchise fees and permits were $64,388. General fund expenditures were $1,135,695, we're still 5.3 percent below our year-to-date projection. We've received $595,846 more than expended. Operations for street, revenues were $159,664, 2.9 percent above projections. Sales tax receipts were $225,198. The new half-cent sales tax was $46,691. Street fund operations, $127,394 for December, 10 percent below our year-to-date projection. We had no sales tax improvement expenditures or capital expenditures. Economic development, revenues were $60,860, December, sales tax was $55,001, interest was $5,359. Expenditures were $208,835 to the Walker Collaborative and Baird &amp; Associates for the Weir Road project. Capital revenues were $421,147. New sales tax was $416,552. Interest was $4,595. Expenditures were $918,79, went to Citicorp, the Aquatic Center, fire station, and interest transfer. Any questions?
All right, thank you, Mr. McCoy. If you'll hold right there a minute, I'm gonna need your help in a bit. For the mayor's report, counsel, your departments all had typical operations this month. Next month is the traditional month for the State of the City address, and I think you're all gonna be pleased when we look back together at what happened in 2016. I've got a letter here, you've all got a copy of it, but I'm gonna read it, just for the record. This is from Jim Campbell, director at Pope County 911. He states, "On Wednesday, January 11th, 2017, the assistant OEM director and himself were dispatched to a possible hazmat call at the Illinois Bio Trail on Pleasantview Road. When they arrived, they found a dog that was abandoned at the park. Dog was extremely weak from malnutrition and the elements." He states, "I called the Russellville Animal Control Department. Tammy answered the phone. I told her about the dog and that it was in very bad shape. Even though it was 4:00 PM, Tammy's response was, 'I'll be right there.' She responded very quickly. When she arrived and saw the condition of the dog, you could see the compassion she had for the animal. She assured us that they would do everything they could do to save the dog. I want you and the animal control director to know what a good job she did that day. She should be commended for a job very well done. I'm proud that she is employed by the city of Russellville." Mr. Campbell, thank you. We don't hear that enough, and that's a thankless job down there, as most of you know, so thank you for your letter. Mike, please tell Tammy how proud we are of her for that. We had a little deal at A&amp;P today. Ms. Harris or Mr. Wiley, do you wanna make the nomination?
Yeah, I wanna put Blake Sharon's name in for Fat Daddy's for the next commissioner for A&amp;P.
Counsel, any discussion? You present that in the form of a motion?
In the form of a motion.
All right, then. So we're looking for confirmation of Blake Sharon to the A&amp;P commission to fill a vacancy. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. The last thing is the deal. Jerry, if you'll start that slideshow. Terrible picture. See if we can go ahead a little bit. That's, that doesn't show up very well, but that's, that's a pile of trash. That's at the bottom of Skyline. This is a little farther up. There's two white bags down in the woods somehow. Ms. Harris, you and I have talked about that, we've both noticed it. That one. Now the next one, stop on a little bit. That pile of trash there, if you'll look in the background, does everybody recognize where that is? That was Sunday morning in the driveway at the little office complex that Verizon is in, that's Walmart Supercenter in the background. It's just a bag of household trash, busted open, laying in the road. Lucky I had time and some friends who have cardboard boxes behind their building, we were able to get that picked up and thrown in a dumpster. Last week I picked up three bags in that area that you were seeing there on Skyline. Yeah, there's a couple more down in the woods. And so, I think that's it, isn't it, Jerry?
That's all of them?
Yeah, thank you. So tomorrow, I got a little group of friends, we're gonna get that bagged up, and then Bruce Moore is gonna take a city vehicle and follow me up and down Skyline, and we'll get that, we'll get that picked up and get it taken care of. I just brought this to your attention. For one thing, I don't think that reflects the pride that most of us feel for our community.
No.
Doesn't look good to visitors that come in and drive that way going out to the state park. Certainly doesn't look good on East Main Street. So we're gonna have some discussions around here the next 30 days or so, and I just want the counsel to be considering, we may ask for, we're gonna review what enforcement action is available to us, and we may be coming up to the council next month if people can't learn to keep their trash. I mean, for crying out loud, we pick up at every house in the city, don't we?
Yep.
So, that's my rant for this month, and I promise to keep those to a minimum. We don't have a department report in January. Next month will be animal control.
The sentence will be here next month.
And, and is it Airport?
A.I.J.
Yeah, Airport. So that's the one where they fly around overhead. We've had a little discussion around here, I guess I need to talk to the department heads, but I'd like to hear back from the counsel over the next week or so. We thought, especially for the newer members, and really, a lot of us, we would like for whatever department is doing the department head report each month, to host the council and the media, and anybody that just wants to, to come out to the site between Tuesday night, Agenda Prep night, and Thursday night, our regular council meeting. It's just an idea we're kinda kicking around, so if y'all will think about that a day or two, and tell me if you wanna participate, or we, you know, we don't wanna, what do you want, Mr. Fraser baking cookies for two weeks and then nobody show up? So, that's just some ideas we've got going. That brings us down to the committee reports. I've stalled all I can, Chairman. I'll turn it over to you, Chairman Freddie Harris.
Okay, Mayor, we met on January the 3rd, and these are the items that we discussed at that time to pass on to the council. The consideration of a resolution to adopt, to accept a bid for the 2017 Ford F-750 truck for the airport. And item number seven on our list, I believe, yes, is the appropriation for this truck. It's forty-six thousand, chassis?
Somebody knows.
Right, chassis truck. Forty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars to replace the truck. So, I make that in the form of a motion to do the resolution to accept the bid, to pass by the finance committee.
You're just doing your motion on item one right now?
One and seven.
Okay, we're gonna do one and seven together, counsel? Is there any discussion on that? You heard the committee's recommendation? In that case, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, Madam Chairman?
Number two through number four are just little balancing accounting items, and I present those in the form of a motion.
Counsel, the motion is items two through four. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right.
Items number five and six are also connected, it's for $570,000. It's the pass-through from El Paso, and one is the appropriation, and one is the pass-through. It's moving it from revenues to expenditures.
All right, beautiful. Counsel, the motion is on items five and six. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Item number eight is the police training fund, $25,722.11.
Okay.
And I make that in the form of a motion.
All right, this motion is on item eight. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item number nine, it's for the grant for the airport, for the runway, taxiway, $414,000, and that is a grant that we'll get back 90 percent of that when it's completed. So I present that in the form of a motion.
Okay, counsel, you heard the motion on item nine. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And that concludes January the 3rd, and tonight before our meeting, we met again, and item number one on that is the city's, a resolution wanting the city's willingness to participate in a TIPS program when feasible, and that is a government program for purchasing stuff.
Mac Hollis? Yep.
Stuff, right? All kinds of stuff.
Counsel, is that in the form of a motion?
That's in the form of a motion.
All right, counsel, you heard the motion on item one. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number twos is appropriation for the parks fund for $400,000 for the soccer fields. Make that in the form of a motion.
All right, counsel, you heard the motion. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item number three, am I getting too fast for you?
No.
Okay, item number three is the consideration of a resolution accepting the bid, a bid by the city for the Weir Road corridor water system extension, and authorize the mayor and clerk to enter in, to execute an agreement. I present that in the form of a motion.
All right, counsel, you've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Consideration of an ordinance waiving the competitive bidding process for the airport truck, and right below that, number five is the appropriation for this amount of money, and to, to do the conversion on the truck is $49,986. And I present that in the form of a motion, both four and five.
All right, counsel, you heard the motions on four and five. Any discussion?
Do we need to suspend the rules on that, because that's an ordinance?
Yeah, I guess we do. You want us?
Suspend the rules and read the title only with short explanation.
Okay.
Second.
Who was it? Mr. Sims seconded that. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then. And Trey, you wanna read the ordinance? Okay.
The ordinance waiting for a version of the airport fuel truck authorized, may receive a treasury design on necessary documents, and consent for the purposes, this ordinance is passed, would waive the state law for purchases over $20,000 in conversion of a airport fuel truck.
Okay, is there any discussion on that? This is kind of a single source. Really no.
That's what I was gonna ask, this is kind of just one place that does this.
Yeah, it's just a specialty deal. Any other discussion? You wanna call the roll on the ordinance?
Yeah, Freddie gave it to.
Do we need a separate one, or is the committee's motion still?
It's still good, so they're just taking one.
Committee's motion is still good.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Mr. Westcott?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So just to keep it all clean, let's back up and do five by itself now.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, that carries. Madam Chairman?
Number six is appropriation just to fund the Oakland Cemetery, and that's $40,000. And number seven, if I can run those together, number seven is another appropriation from the street department to pay for the purchase of Cedar Street, and that is for $252,154.
All right, counsel, you heard the motions on six and seven. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Number eight, is that still mine? Discussion of a special election concerning ordinance number 2260, rezoning property for the construction of the, of an assisted living facility.
Okay, we kinda threw that one on there at the end, Miss Chairman, and because we, Clerk just finished counting the signatures. Kathy, you wanna give us an update on where we're at, and we'll get advice on where we go from here.
There were 1,347 signatures submitted, and I verified 960, and they needed 958 to be able to go forward, and so they reached that amount.
So you're telling me they're short?
No. No.
No.
I think they have enough.
Okay.
Okay, but then there's been some discussion since.
How you wanna go from here? Mr. Giles, or do you wanna?
We just need to look at, at this point, calling for, at least getting the process started for the election, that's the next thing is.
Can't hear you, Mr. Smith.
When was the election set on those petitions?
I believe it was May the 9th.
I have it right here, it's May the 9th.
The council would need to pass a resolution to set up the special election for May 9th.
Aren't we jumping ahead of ourselves? I thought we were just discussing this tonight.
I'm just saying, at some point, it has to be done.
What about the ordinance that we've got that says they gotta get the signatures in in 30 days from the time we pass that ordinance?
Again, there's a state law that says that a referendum petition has 60 days, that all state laws are presumed constitutional until a court of law declares them to be unconstitutional. So, right now, that has not been declared such. So the city's perspective at this point is to look at passing a resolution unless that law's challenged by somebody.
Mayor, I would like for you to call the attorney to the podium, please.
Mr. Giles?
Yes.
Mr. Giles?
Thank you, Mayor Horton, members of the city council, city staff. Good to be here again. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have been engaged by Landers Holding LLC, I'm an attorney in Little Rock, Stephen R. Giles, P.A., and to come up and address you on this issue. And, well, I think, I'm just kinda getting into it, but what I understand from the news article, and what I have heard is going on, is I got a copy of the ordinance that you passed to approve the Arbor's PUD, and filed my copy, and done some research, finding the ordinances, previous ordinances that this council has passed regarding the matter that city attorney Trey Smith was mentioning. The Arkansas Constitution gives municipalities the right to establish election and rules for the filing of initiative and referendum. Those are two very different things. This, and a referendum in this case, is a challenge by property owners and voters in the last mayoral election to gather signatures and challenge a law that you passed. The ordinance number 2260 that you passed that approved this rezoning is a law, and my interpretation is that it's a referendum. And the state law said you have the right to establish the time for filing those petitions after the passage of that ordinance. The past, the ordinance was passed on November 17th, 2016, and was filed with record in the circuit clerk's office on November 22nd, 2016. After looking at this, unless somebody shows me something different, my opinion is that it is governed by your law that says you have to 30 days to file that petition. That time has expired. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Giles?
I think he's pretty cut and dried.
But what do we do?
We don't have to do it tonight, do we?
No.
What, a tip of 60 days before?
No less than 60 days.
Before May 9th?
Right.
Okay.
The problem is, is that all state laws are presumed constitutional unless declared otherwise by a court of law. The state law that gives municipal referendums, petitions 60 days, is still valid and presumed constitutional until a court of law makes that decision.
Okay.
So if the council wants to challenge that, then they have to make the vote to challenge it in a court of law. Otherwise, I don't believe the council has the authority on its own to make such a determination.
And Mr. Tripp is right, it could be the council, or it could be the voters who believe otherwise to file that case and be Pope County Circuit Court. And, but as of now, my opinion is, my clients have a vested right to start drawing permits to start this construction, and there's no, there's no legal reason I can see to, that would prevent them from doing that. Also, let me just say that there is, no, I'm just gonna stay with that.
Should we go ahead and take action tonight, or table till February and see what we can do?
It's whatever the council wants to make that decision.
What kind of move?
I'm just saying, the declaration for the special election has to be done no later than 60 days.
60 days out from May the 9th.
Yeah, so.
You know, counsel, you got the luxury of thinking about it till February, on the other hand, you could make the declaration now, and...
Does our ordinance say 30 days, Mr. Smith?
Yes, the, the period for a referendum is 30 days, set by ordinance number 1635.
So why are we giving them 60 days then if it's, if it's, our ordinance says 30 days?
Because there's a state law that was passed in the session of 2015 that stretched municipal referendum petitions to be turned in at 60 days. State laws are presumed constitutional unless declared otherwise.
And I might point out that that, the reference to Mr. Smith's action by the legislature was after you had passed your, I don't, I don't really necessarily agree with you, Trey, so my opinion is that 30 days is 30 days, and no law has changed that or court order.
I believe, until the court rules, the state law would apply unless it's declared unconstitutional because it's in violation of Article 5, Section 1.
Can't we just table this and come back to it next month? But Trey, you also agree that somebody would have to file a lawsuit and get a judgment or a court order to stay or enjoin the city from issuing permits, because right now, my position is, my client has a right to start drawing permits. You passed the ordinance, it was unanimous to rezone the property. People don't like it, they have a right to challenge it, but they have not done it in accordance with the law as, as we read it.
I move to table this until next.
That's what I think.
Okay. Is there anything that would keep them from getting their permits? I mean, the risk is?
The risk is on them at that point, if...
So, the change in the law in 2015, was that, was that voted on?
No, it was passed by the general assembly.
Yeah, but how can they change the Constitution? The Constitution said 30 days. So how do they, how do they change the Constitution?
The Constitution says that the cities and counties can set their referenda from 30 to 90.
Between 30.
The city did so, and therefore, that's the question that has to go before the courts. As again, I said, it's axiomatic that all state laws are presumed constitutional. State law supersedes local ordinance. Constitutional law supersedes state law. However, the interpretation of that is left in one of the three branches of government, which is the judiciary, not the legislative branch.
But is it fair to hold up my clients who went through all of your process procedures for doing a PUD? Paid the fee?
As long as they realize they know what they're getting into, and will not, they're at, they do it at their own risk.
So, but, okay, so...
If they wanted to file a suit, would that move through the courts pretty quick? Or is that one of those things to drag on forever?
Yes. It would move through quick because of the date of January, or of May 9th, it would be expedited by the circuit court.
So the sooner action is taken, the sooner we'll get results?
Yes.
Trey, when did we pass 1635? What year, was it before or after?
98 or 99, I think.
So, long time our ordinance has been in effect?
Yes.
For 30 days.
And my clients relied on that information when they went through this process, so...
Okay. Do you think we should go ahead and take action?
I think we should.
First, did we have a, was yours a motion?
It was.
All right, we had a motion to table till February, does anybody want a second?
I don't think you got a second.
I thought I did.
I continue to make that motion.
Personally, I'd like to get this thing resolved.
Okay.
If it's gonna be tabled, is there a need to wait a full month? And how much, what are we clarifying, and who's clarifying it, and how long is it gonna take to clarify? Can we meet back? If we have to come back, can we meet in a week or two weeks and not put, just drag this on for another month?
Who would start to work on this? Trey, you, or one of the clients, or?
The only thing the council can do now, absent a court order, is to set the special election.
Who files the court order?
If the council wants to, it can. It is have to authorize me to do so.
Can we vote on that tonight, so this can start on its way of resolution?
That's what I would like to do.
We can. Let's clear up.
Okay.
Mr. Westcott made a motion. Did we have a... Did we have a second down there?
I think Brown did.
Right here.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second to table till February. All in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I don't think we have to call them. Okay, so we're not gonna table it.
I make, I make a motion that we take this to court and, because of, because of the 30 days, and let's get this thing resolved.
The council also can not take it to court and allow somebody else to file a lawsuit and challenge your action because, you know, I mean, that's, that's the option.
I don't think the, I don't think the council challenging a petition drive of its own residences, they were a good idea. But there's something that sounds bad about that.
I'll withdraw that motion.
Yeah. I mean, I don't like the people's rights.
I just want to see it resolved.
Sure. But what Mr. Giles is saying, pass it and let them file. However, Mr. Mayor, there is a process.
I think my client has a right to develop unless...
Let's go one at a time. Mr. Giles?
To answer your question is yes.
Okay. Mr. Sims?
Well, I just, I'm, this is in my ward.
Yep.
I'll admit that wholeheartedly. I've had a lot of discussion with individuals on both sides of this issue. And what I've told them several times, there is a process in place. We have a planning commission that are all appointed. We have zoning laws, we have all kinds of different ordinances in place. And unless there's something corrupt about that process, then, you know, we're to that point. The city council voted unanimously to support what the planning commission said. And that's where I see that we are right now. Now, these petitions, the point I'm making is, is, is this costs the city a lot of money to host special elections. We went through this with the Walmart market on West Main. And like it or love it, and I happen to love it because I live on that end of town, it passed by like 75-25. So with that said, I would like to see us take action tonight and put this thing so we can go on and get this development started.
I agree.
I think we need to take the shortest path between two points, do it right. I, I support the people's right. I mean, you guys are all elected to speak for the people. But sometimes it's a close call, and, and I think the citizens deserve their right to, to ask. On the other hand, this has the potential of costing us an important development. I think, I think, I think your suggestion was right. Who said that about going ahead and doing it? Was that you, Mr. Sims? Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, we've got a motion to set the election for May 9th? Is that what we're...
No.
No, that ain't, that ain't... That's not what he made. He, he's making, he, he wants them to go ahead and start building it, getting the permits and all of that, and go on with it.
Which I think they can.
My, my, I'm not, I, no, I'm not making a motion to support the election at all. I think the election, in the long run, is gonna cost us time and money.
It will.
And it's, and it's holding up this development that's been, you know, there's, there's been a...
But we're legally obligated to follow through on it. I mean, the citizens, they got enough petitions. We're obligated to follow through on it.
Then we need to.
I think we should go ahead and...
Then we need to decide what state law, like...
Mayor, may I, may I just make a point?
Yeah.
Okay. The planning commission, in a public hearing with proper notice, as required by law, and your ordinances, had a public hearing. They proved this unanimously. All those people had a chance to come to the planning commission, try to convince them not to do it. And then maybe they were on the record, I don't know that. But the commission decided it's good planning and development, they're meeting all of the requirements, minimum requirements of your codes. You all approved it unanimously. At a public hearing, where people who didn't want this to happen had the opportunity to convince you, the lawmakers, that this should not happen. It was approved. Now they wanna, somebody, I don't even know who it is, wants to challenge that. I can tell you from long experience as a land use attorney, that courts do not like to get in to discretionary legislative decisions of planning commission or forum court at the county level. They, they know you are elected to make these decisions, and they don't want to overturn it unless there is a clear violation of higher law. I don't see one here, state law. So, anyway, that's my point.
Mr. Kroom?
So what can we do? My name is Bucky Kroom. And from the discussion that I'm hearing here tonight, it seems to me that the council could make a decision here tonight to vote that the 30 days is what this council believes is the period that you could receive the signatures. If you voted to do that, that would allow the petitioners an opportunity to, to file a lawsuit to stop that. Or if you take no action, you're in effect saying that, that you're, and, and moving forward with setting the election, you're saying that in effect, you're approving the 60 days. There's obviously a dispute here, but the council could make a motion here for, to, for, to uphold your city ordinance that says 30 days. You could take a vote on that, up or down, and see if that passes. And then it would, the ball would be clearly in the petitioner's court to try to stop that. Would be one thought I would have on that.
I, I just, as the city's leg advisor, I just disagree with that. I think we are legally bound unless the statute is found by a court of law. And anybody's free to take, challenge this, but until that's done, we must abide by the state law. There's, to me, there's no gray area in that.
You're not saying you necessarily, you're not saying one way or the other, whether you think...
I'm not saying whether or not there's a conflict between the two.
But it is the two now.
But until the conflict is challenged in the court, and there is a finding of unconstitutionality by this 60-day period, the city has to go by it.
So we should set, we should set the election for May the 9th?
Right. It's not about land use.
Then it's, then somebody can challenge it.
That's correct.
I respectfully disagree. You know, this council challenging its own decision to approve a zoning and take it to court, I've not heard that before. Mr. Sims is right. What, what do you stand to lose if you issue permits for these guys? I mean, they, they've got a lot of money invested in this, and they want to go forward with it. It's a good project, you've said it, planning commission, no, everybody's said it. And why wait for somebody to file a lawsuit? I just don't agree with that. If they file the lawsuit, they have to ask the classic, of these Pope County Circuit Judge to issue a temporary restraining order or an injunction to keep you from issuing permits, because right now, they have a vested right to go forward with this. I don't see the logic of delaying this because there's a potential lawsuit that, who knows? It may come out, they, they don't win. And, and you were right, tonight. Why make my clients wait for that?
Right now, according to the state law, the petition was turned in. The referendum is lawful unless shown to be otherwise, though.
That's what I'm saying. It's lawful, so...
This is not about, this is not about the stuff that happened beforehand. The issue is the referendum and the time period at which to turn the petition in. That's what everything turns on.
Well, Trey, who should, who should file the lawsuit and ask the court to agree with that, that this 30-day time to file petitions in your ordinance is, is not right? It's unlawful? It's still of record, and it hasn't been challenged, okay?
Again, you agree with me that state law supersedes local, you know that.
I'm not really sure I agree with your interpretation that you told me just before this meeting. I've called you for three days to say where to turn.
I know, but until it's decided by a court of law, that's always been...
And so why should that stop these guys if they want to take the risk and go forward?
But they, they go forward throwing risks, but...
Well, okay. Okay.
There's gonna be an election...
Just don't say that they can't pull permits.
There's gonna be an election, though, unless it otherwise decided by a court of law, based on the referendum.
Well, wait a minute. Has this council decided that, that your 30 days to file a petition is unlawful? And, I don't agree, so...
You don't agree that the state law overrides?
I don't agree that you have, that you are going to try to set an election date on something that is in question. I mean, you can, but don't stop my clients from building, because I don't think anybody's gonna win in court on your, your argument. I'm just being honest.
Mr. Mayor, let me be the one to go out on a limb here. I move that we stick with ordinance number 1635 that says the timeframe is 30 days, and that we not have an election, but that we stick with what our ordinance says. That's my motion.
And I'll second that.
We've got some stuff that we haven't cleaned up yet before we do this one.
I don't know what we've got to clean up.
Well, there was a motion made there to suspend.
No, that died.
Okay.
That motion died.
I call the question.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Would you restate it, please, Mr. Westcott? We...
I move that we adhere to ordinance number 1635, which states that the timeframe for turning in signatures for the referendum is 30 days.
All right. Any other discussion, council?
Mayor, for clarification, Mr. Smith, you agree with that or don't agree with that?
I don't agree with it, but that's my advice.
I call the question, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Let's do the roll on that. We got a second by Mr. Wiley.
Mr. Westcott?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Mr. George?
No.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Tripp?
No.
Well, it fails unless...
What is it, Kathy?
Four to three.
It fails unless there's five affirmative votes.
Well, I hope we don't have to go to court over these guys. Come on. It's gonna be a great development, everybody knows that. Are we done?
I, I believe it will be a great development, I really do. But, you know, we're, we're on ten eyes either way if we don't follow it, follow the law correctly. And I've, I've listened to both of you, and, and I understand Trey's argument because I, because it's, it's applied to something else that we did a year or so ago, and so... That motion fails. May I suggest, the bid opening for the wastewater side of the Werwood Road project is the 24th, which is next Tuesday, Wednesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. And there's been some discussion about wanting to have a special election, a special call meeting and get that done.
On Wednesday.
So, would anybody be interested in tabling this until the 24th? And let us get a little bit more clear understanding?
Well, I mean, if we, if we got things on our books that says such and such, and we go by it, and we vote according to what the ordinance are, and then we find out later that that ordinance doesn't apply anymore, we need to know that. The, either the attorney or somebody needs to keep us up on that. Because if it's not, if, if that ordinance is no good, the old one that we've got, we need to change our ordinance to the new one. Because everything that, everything that was done with this particular item was done according to the ordinance that we've got on our books. I mean, how, how can you do something if, if you got, if the ordinance is not right? I mean, it's not fair to the people that bring stuff to us, and we, and we support it, and then the ordinance is not correct. I mean, I mean...
We would not object to tabling and coming back. Mr. Smith and I can get together, have some substantive conversation about that, and hopefully, we'd all come to a, a decision and go from there.
I know Trey's a hundred percent right that state law would trump, trump local law. The question here is whether that state law was legally enacted. And so I'd like to...
I have a question.
Have a little more research on that.
I have a question.
Mr. Sims?
You said it took five, yet we have an open seat. The vote was four to three.
Correct. It takes five affirmative votes.
Well, with an open seat, how's that possible?
It still is counted as...
It's accounted as a no vote.
It's counted, uh...
So the vote's four to four.
No. It still takes five affirmative votes to pass any type of ordinance, resolution, or order.
We're not talking about appropriations.
You're talking about a motion that would have made a decision. Again, it's five affirmative votes.
Mayor, before you take a final decision, I, I, I agree, can we have a few days? I just, I'm just now getting into this, I'm just called like yesterday, or... So respectfully request time for me to get with Trey, and we can kind of work through this, and either agree or agree to disagree.
You feel like the 24th gives you time to do that? I mean, I'd love to see us get this done, but let's, let's try to get it done right.
I agree.
I didn't obtain a motion to table to the 24th.
Motion.
Mr. Tripp? Second. Mr. Brown? All in favor of the motion to table?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Giles. It's good to see you again, and I know we'll get this worked out correctly.
Thank you.
Thank you. That'll bring us to unfinished business one. We discussed briefly in December, the developer, Hunt Properties General Partnership asked for an extension for the time to complete construction of the convention center. I think a lot of the folks here tonight are here to show support for this, or there's some that are here to answer questions. Mr. Hunt is here, and, and then anybody else that y'all see that you want to call on, so...
Well, Mayor, I'll make a motion so we can get this thing started, make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Second was who? Second was Mr. Sims?
Get it into discussion.
Is that right?
Discussion.
We got a motion and a second, discussion.
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Is that just as is, or with any...
Well, we, I want some, I want some things spelled out in it.
Okay.
Need Mr. Hunt at the podium.
Who wants to go first? Mr. Brown?
No, you go ahead.
Okay, well, I, Mr. Hunt, I just was coming on the council when they came here, and then October of, what's it, October 15th of, of 2015, you come in here and you told us, you know, you hoped within three months that you would start breaking ground after our, do dirt work. That was, I was sitting right here, sir. Anyway, uh...
You said three months of breaking ground?
That was October, and you said you hoped you could get something started by November of that year?
Okay.
And this is continuing. But anyway, when there's dirt work did start out there, there was a bunch of eyes opening up, looking around. And all of a sudden, I got weeds growing out there. You come to agreement on a resolution, 1413, this is our resolution here, on October, August 5th, 2014, that's signed by the mayor, Eaton, and you and your wife.
Yes, sir.
You agree? There was a thing that was also written in papers, it was about your dream was to bring businesses to Russellville at that time. There was a statement that was in there.
Yes, sir.
And I, I go back to this, October 15th was the date that, that you came here and you updated the, the thing, and you laid out the plans and what it looked like. Do you remember that?
Oh, yes, sir, definitely.
Okay, now, I was wowed by that and thought it was a great thing. Okay. Again, from there, you went on, and I think there was some, some taxing things, reasons things didn't get done there for a while.
Yes, sir.
All right? But that means there was no money.
There was no what?
There was no money. There was no money. You were waiting on tax money.
There no tax money?
Yes, there was tax incentives.
New market tax credits.
Oh, okay, okay.
Tax credits, whatever.
Yes, sir.
From the state.
Yes, sir.
Even though we went through all this time and everything else, I still have not seen completed plans.
Okay.
Do you have a hundred percent plans?
Yes, sir, we have, we turned in a hundred percent plan for the convention center, which originally was gonna be about fifteen thousand square feet, and that's about thirty-four thousand square feet. Those a hundred percent plans have been turned in. Uh, Hilton plan should be completed by the end of this month and then turned in shortly thereafter. And if you would allow me to, could I please explain to you the process so we can all be on the same page?
I can explain to you what the citizens have looked at here.
Okay, well...
Okay, for, this has been going on for a while. It started before you?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hammonds, and then it...
Well, could I, could I please, could I please make a statement, sir?
What?
Okay. First of all, I appreciate the questions, and when you talked about three months, there was dirt moved on the site within three months. It's called soil boring, that we spent a bunch of money drilling down, trying to find the best place to set the hotel. It's called civil work. Sir, when you build something of this magnitude, it's not like building a Buffalo Wild Wings six thousand square feet. We building something here that's over a hundred plus thousand square feet. You dealing with a company that's almost worth a half a trillion dollars. So, working with Hilton is very, very difficult and time consuming. When I met with Trey, the previous mayor and the leadership here, I mentioned to you all, three years, we can target three years to get all this done, but I do not control Hilton. I'm just a franchisee and a developer. There's no way that I can dedicate, that I can dictate anything in the world to Hilton Corporation of the world, who owned by Blackstone, who worth about a hu- four hundred billion dollars. David Hunt and Melissa Hunt cannot dictate to these people. There's a process we go through, it's a very continuous process, and the process requires me to spend a ton of money. This is roughly an eighteen million dollar project. Before I got here, for instance, to give you an example, when I first came to Russellville, Arkansas roughly five years ago, before I came here, I spent one year going through the approval process and the building process for Buffalo Wild Wings. When I got here and purchased land, it took me additional two years to open up my Buffalo Wild Wings in this community. So, for you to think that I can come here and in one year see progress on a project of this magnitude, it's just not being fair and not being honest to the citizenry. That's why we did a three-year agreement, and I sit, and I mentioned then, that, sir, I can't guarantee you Trey can vouch for this. There's no way on earth I can sit there and guarantee this community how fast Hilton would act. I can only tell you, sir, the next day, I called Robbie Hall, who's the, who's the developer vice president for Hilton Corporation for Tennessee, I'm sorry, for Arkansas, in Texas. I got on his calendar for roughly sixty days. He put me on this, that's how far he put me out, I'm sorry, thirty days from that date. He and I met here at the Hampton Inn in Russellville, Arkansas. He declined to come to Russellville, Arkansas twice. I met him here twice, that day and another three months after that. Both times, he declined Russellville, Arkansas. He said it wasn't progressive enough. He said they have enough traffic. He said they have enough revenue generators. That's what he said. I, each time, I had to go back and spend money with things to get him to come on board, to accept this community. Once I got his acceptance, sir, at that point, I had to go out and hire architect firm to design and draw plans. Now, I did not want a canned Hilton Garden Inn to be on this site, because I think the site is too valuable for that. I think the potential is too great. So, what I set out with my architect to do was, let's get involved in this community. Let's come talk to the chamber comer, which I did. Let's come talk to the, uh, tourist department, which we did. Let's come, let's come talk to people in this community who knew what the needs were first, before we start drawing anything. Then I said, okay, instead of just looking at Russellville, let's look at the projects in this, in Arkansas and Texas that has failed. Let's look at convention centers that have failed. Why did they fail? That takes time. And of this eighteen million dollar project we're talking about here, I've already invested almost fifteen percent. You see, there's so much work that has to get done before construction ever starts. And that's what I, unless you've done this before, you don't know those things.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't work in construction.
I understand that, sir, but not just construction, development. This is not something that you just flip a switch and you go build something like this. This is something you have to do a bunch of due diligence, not only just for the fact that Hilton makes me do it, but more importantly, so I have to do the right thing for my family, and my business, and my employees. So, I just can't go wheelie dinner and just go do something. I have to do it right. And I tried to develop something, this project, the convention center went from, as I said, about fifteen thousand square foot to thirty-four thousand square feet. Why? Because we found reasons to be to bring more people by building a nicer facility that had more amenities to it that would bring more people to town. That's a risk that I took. That's an investment that I made. The city hadn't given me anything. I've not asked this community for one thing like the last two developers had that was gonna do this project. They wanted all their money upfront. I asked for not one penny. All the risk is on me and my business. And so, Lord knows, sir, I'm trying to do what's right, but I gotta have a little help. I gotta have an understanding that this is not easy. If it was, everybody'd be doing it.
Well, I would appreciate that you'd come and talk to us.
I'd love to.
Okay, but you talked to the mayor and stuff, I've asked, and I haven't seen you, it's been a while.
Sir, I volunteered, every time I speak to anyone in this community, I will come talk to you privately and tell you what's going on. I will give, I'll give you a monthly report that helps this community. I've tried to be as open and transparent as possible. I've came to the chamber and met with whomever wanted to meet with me about this. I think, I think Christie Graham can attest to that. I, I, I don't, you know, I've done everything I can to try to be as inclusive as I could by understanding what this community need. And more importantly, what would make this development really successful, not just for me. Because this is really about the whole city and community of Russellville and all the other business people. Because, you know, guess what? I'm gonna have a hundred and twenty-six rooms there. There's, my prayers are, my hope is that we're gonna need a lot more rooms than that. So, my hopes is, as Ronald Reagan would say, we lift all boats by doing this. So, that, that's what I'm trying to, that's what I've been trying to do the last two years. It just hasn't just been about me doing nothing. Believe me, I've invested tons of money, tons of time, tons of my professional, trying, trying to get this off the ground.
Okay, there's, uh, there's two things else I'd like to ask you about.
Yes, sir.
One of them has to do with, uh, not here, but in between us getting, not getting started, and you starting, you built another hotel in Jonesboro.
Yes, sir.
And you just recently asked for an extension on that, didn't you not?
No, sir, it's not true.
That's what I was, what was in the computer thing when I read that article out of Jonesboro, sir.
No, sir, we don't have any kind of time period or anything on hotel in Jones, we don't have no extension. That, that, that is, has, uh, we have, we have no extension on Jonesboro.
Well, I have, I have that, a copy of that somewhere.
Okay, well, I don't know what that is, but we have no extension there. Because we have no governing body involved in that process at all.
Okay, and the mayor informed us that you wouldn't be eighty percent on that project until, uh, March?
I would think now, we're probably gonna be looking at March, April time, yes.
So, you can't get started here until then?
Sir, you got misinformation. As I've just mentioned to you a moment ago, we have a loan at the local bank here, which I definitely try to always do business with local banks, but there's quite a bit of funds that my family and my business will invest, as we always invest, and some of it is so far that we won't even, before we ever get close to getting, needing money from a bank. We always do it that way. I'm, I'm pretty much, I'm pretty much, I fund my project myself to the level to the bank comes in, which is, I think it's about sixty-five percent on this project. So, this project could be funded sixty-five percent. Now, I got approval last month from the board and been able to get the city contract done, that's what we waiting on now. Because I think, I'd be ready to turn the plans in today for the convention center. I could be ready to get the convention center built by August thirty-first of this year. Because it's an easy thing to build, because it's so large and it's just an open building.
Well, I'm just trying to ask you questions.
Yes, sir, I know.
To get answers, because I, I get asked questions.
I know. I appreciate that.
All right. Are you still in litigation here?
Ye- yes, sir, we are. Yes, sir. You talking about what this?
My only question here would to the council be, should we be making an extension if you're in litigation?
Sir, if you, if you do the business I do all across several states, and, and you have hotels and restaurants, and you have all the things I have, you elected a president who's in litigation a mile long. So, please, we're talking about somebody who I, who owes me money, not I owe them money. I deliver what I supposed to deliver. So, for you to hold that against me is very, very unfair. People are gonna go sue a hamburger. So, so, you know, I got a guy who suing me because he got rain in his backyard when he had a flood. So, I can't, you know, I can't, that's why I pay legal fees, that's why I pay lawyers, because I can't, I can't worry about things like that. That's just, that's the side that we in. Everybody wants something for nothing. Everybody think they owe something. I'm sorry, I, I never been given anything. I don't want you to give me nothing. But I'm not gonna let you take what I have freely out.
Well, nobody's trying to take what you got. We just wanna get what we wanna do, and we wanted to see something happen, and it hadn't happened, and that's my question.
Yes, sir, I understand. Well, sir, all I can tell you, sir, humbly as I know how to say it, and God, God, God be my witness, from the day I signed the contract with your city, I've been working diligently trying to get this done. I done called Hilton, God knows how many are trying to try to speed this thing up, but I'm just an humble man. I cannot speed those folks up. You know, if you go see that, if you go see where they are, you don't tell them what to do, you don't set a meeting with them, they tell you what to do. And, and I, and I mentioned that to Trey, and I mentioned that to the Merrill Multiplication. I have no control over none of that, none. My architect get thirty percent drawings done, he submits them, it takes them two, three months to even look at them. I can't do nothing about that. I wish that I could.
Well, I'm not trying to condemn you, I'm just trying to get answers, so...
Yes, sir.
The people here can hear what you got to say.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, you know, I keep trying to go through Randy and everything, but that's not coming out of your mouth.
Sir?
I said, what he's telling me is not coming out of your mouth. That's what I'm here, wanted to hear, to hear what you got to say.
Yes, sir, yes. I don't know what the...
I don't wanna get into any arguments here, we're...
Oh, no, sir, I appreciate the question. But, but, but can I add something?
When do you anticipate getting on with this?
If we're able, now, let me premise this by saying this, and I mean this humbly as I know how. We're wait, we submitted the last few change, we got ninety percent approved drawing by Hilton, fif- December fifteenth. They wanted a few things changed, very, very minor things. My architect completed those by the end of the year, resubmitted them the first, the first business day in January. They have promised us they will have them back to us the end of January, first, the latest, the first of February. That's what they've told us. As soon as I get those drawn, I will send those to the local print shop, have three sets submitted to the city for planning. If everything is approved tonight, hopefully, the city will extend my contract, because to give us time to build both properties. And then, we were in it, then we will close sometime latter part of next month with, with, uh, with the bank. Once we close, we can then start expending a bunch of money on the site, getting our, getting our footers dug, because we cannot go dig footers without the loan being in place. We have no choice there, but to get, and I can't get the loan in place, so the city extend the contract, because the bank don't wanna get caught up in a lawsuit August thirty-first, because I'm out there working and y'all gonna cut me off. And so, that's kinda, that's kinda where I am. I wish it could've been done last month, but I understand why, because I needed to come here. But I'm just trying to move this as fast as I can down the road. My wife and my business is ready to make the investment, we've already shown ourselves ready to make the investment. We just need just a little help and a little partnering, as we've done in the past.
This city would like, we don't have no Plan B, you know, so, you know, you're it.
No. Well, I, I, I tell you, sir, I know two others developers that failed, but I think you can, I think you will be, I think you can tell, I've sent you the letter of franchise agreement here for the Hilton Garden Inn, approval from Hilton. I've already sent you a complete set of drawings on the convention center. I've already submitted ninety percent drawings for the review by the planning committee, and they, I think they came back with a very few changes, minor changes to that. I'm hoping in a month, I have you a hundred percent drawings. Sir, that's progress compared to where you were before.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes, sir.
If we approve this tonight, would you be able to promise us that you can start by April?
As long as you have caveat and other things out of my control. And then, when you say start, I would hope that the bank loan is closed sometime February. We gotta get a, we gotta get an S-billed appraisal, once I get the hundred percent drawings to him. For instance, if Hilton, for some reason, do not, it normally takes about four to six weeks to get appraisals back for a project this size. Let me just give you an example. If Hilton does not give me the approval to, to not send back my hundred percent plan stamped for me to send to your planning department and give to the bank, they can't go get an S-billed appraisal done. So, therefore, it could be pushed back based on things out of my control. Because I, I say this to you, once Hilton gives me the hundred percent drawings that they've approved everything, I then would be in control. I just hate making promises, sir, when I'm not in control, and I'm being as honest I can be.
That would give you February, March, and April, as long as you started sometime in April.
Yes, sir.
That's three months. A lot of things can happen in three months.
Yes, sir, you're correct.
Okay, the resolutions you had during phases, sir, phase one was the hotel?
Yes, sir.
And the convention center?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and there was other phases after that?
Yes, sir.
In the agreement?
Yes, sir.
The first two are going to happen.
Yes, sir, definitely. Long as God give me breath. I'm done. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Brown, Councilman Brown.
Mayor, may I ask?
Mr. Tripp?
Yes, sir. Hey, Mr. Tripp.
A couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
What exactly are you asking for? How much time are you asking for?
Well, right now, we have, we met and we agreed to some day, I think it was end of September twenty seventeen, is that, is that right, Attorney Smith?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, if Hilton can get me drawings back, get me my hundred percent drawings approval, uh, I feel very certain we can beat that time. My hopes would be to definitely beat that time. Because obviously, the faster we get it done, the faster I start getting my investment back, which my wife kinda likes me doing that. And I'm sure the, you know, the community here would like the jobs and all the additional revenue they would generate. So, sir, there's no reason why I would not try to speed up and get that done as fast as possible.
Would it be, would you be willing to, to agree to a start-by date of like July first?
Definitely.
And have a eighteen-month or twenty-four-month complete-by date, have a front-end deadline and a back-end deadline?
Yes, sir. The only thing I would ask you to, ask you to add to the front-end deadline was to be if you would allow me to put some clause in there that would say, based on Hilton giving me the hundred percent approval, and then I'm having at least two months after that approval for me to move forward. Because it's not a lot I can do until I get a hundred percent drawings.
I could go for that.
Yeah, and that's all I ask. It's not, like I said, once I get it out of Hilton hand, well, I'm not dealing with all the bureaucracy that is Hilton, I can, then I can control things better. But until I get it out of that level, I just can't.
If it's the July first deadline and you're having an issue, you can come back and...
Yes, sir.
We can, we can adjust as needed, but I think that what Mr. Brown was getting to is a lot of people in the community are saying, hey, where's the vengeance?
Yes, sir.
Hey, what's going on with the vengeance?
Yes, sir.
You know, it's been a long time coming, and so, everybody's, you know, uh, excited, cautious, but, you know, uh, you know, ready to, to see something.
Yes, sir.
If we're ready for a motion, I mean...
We done got a motion.
Well, or maybe amend it?
You say for a year, Randy?
Do I?
A year extension? No, a year.
Mr. Hunt asked for a one-year extension. Well, he asked to start in March and an extension till March of twenty eighteen, but that left no room for error.
If we do amend it...
So, in December, we were talking about eighteen months.
If we amend the motion to allow him to start by date, and we need to clarify what starting is of July first?
Yes, sir.
And then, a completion date of December thirty-first?
That'd work.
Which is your eighteen month?
That's awesome.
Of twenty seventeen.
Yes, sir.
And then, if he can't meet the July first?
Eighteen, eighteenth.
I'm sorry, twenty seventeen.
Eighteen, eighteen.
That'd give him enough month to get there.
July first of this year to start, December of next year to finish.
That'd work.
And then, if he needs a, if we need to make a little adjustment along the way, we can. But that gives everybody a date to shoot.
Yes, I appreciate that.
Does that work with your funding? Does that work with the lending institution?
Yes, sir.
You know, you, every, all that should be good?
Funding is ready to go, the, I'm sorry.
That'd work.
So, that's in the form of a motion.
All right, let's hang on here. Did we have an original? What was the original motion?
My reason for motion was to approve this with some, with some spec, some certain things.
All right, so you're doing an amendment to the motion?
Yeah.
State your amendment again.
July first start-by date, which we will still, and I, and I guess fittings or some type of...
Yes, sir.
...work as dignified the, the, uh, starting, the, the effect of starting July first of this year and a completion date of, uh, end of December of next year.
Yeah, that'll be added on to the agreement, right, on the resolution.
Right. So, do we have a second on that motion?
Yeah, we had a second.
I'll second, uh, or Mr. Robert's.
Mr. Sims? All right, so let's vote on the amendment first, that the start date will be no later than...
July first.
July one of twenty seventeen, completion date no later than December of twenty eighteen.
Yeah.
All in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Now, we vote on my amendment.
Is there any other discussion?
Nope.
All right, back to Mr. Wiley's motion.
To adopt.
To adopt as amended.
Yes.
And who seconded that?
I did.
Mr. Sims?
Sam.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you, sir, thank you, thank you, Council.
You're all right with all that? Wow.
This is, uh, really exciting to me, I worked on this since two thousand and six with Mr. John Q. Hammond, and talked to probably fifteen other developers, and two people, Mr. Hammond and Mr. Hunt, had enough faith in the River Valley to do this project without the city being liable. And I commend you, I know you've had a lot of questions, and I commend you for your perseverance in the decision made tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
Counsel, that brings us to new business one, I hope y'all don't mind, we do a fairly easy one. Consideration of a public hearing and ordinance to vacate a right-of-way South Quanah.
Motion.
Okay, that's the ordinance we need to suspend.
Yes.
Is that an ordinance? Make motion, suspend the rules, read the title only with short explanation.
All right. Okay, we got a motion, Mr. Wiley, and a second, Mr. Westcott, to suspend the rules, read one time by title only with short explanation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Smith? Okay, can y'all please? Y'all don't mind, I know everybody's excited, and I appreciate y'all's input, we, we got some business left to do. Mr. Smith?
Okay. In order to vacate and abandon all of the right-of-way on the West Fourth Street running between South Quanah and South Phoenix, described as a four-foot right, fifty-foot right-of-way, I've got part of my thing blocked out for some reason. Line between blocks K and N of the Barger White Edition, the city of Russell, Hope County, Arkansas, for the purposes, this ordinance if passed would vacate and abandon a fifty-foot right-of-way, uh, on West Fourth Street line blocks between blocks K and N of the Barger White Edition, uh, between Quanah and South Phoenix.
First to adopt.
Second.
Uh, they had one.
Yes. So it needs to be declared.
All right, before we go any farther, we'll declare a public hearing open, is there anybody that'd like to speak on that? Good enough? All right, hearing done, we'll close the public hearing.
Now make motion to adopt.
Now we got a motion to adopt, a second still, Mr. Westcott. Madam Clerk, you wanna call the roll?
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Westcott?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Lost my agenda.
Consideration of resolution for, be able to. Body shop.
There I am. Yeah. Resolution issued, special use permit to operate a body shop.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Hey, what were the conditions and contingencies? I realize I may not be.
Uh.
Do we know those?
Section two.
Section two.
Garza, that's your, that project, isn't it?
Yeah.
The Sohrles Body Shop?
Save us reading time, Mr. Garza, step to the microphone and tell us what the, the fence, I think, and, uh, parking, I, I think I remember.
Think they got it all worked out.
Tearing it one down. Last I heard, we had gotten it all worked out. Okay.
Long time ago.
Okay, I found, I found the list. Conditions include a landscaping plan, provide fencing that visually screens the entire car storage area, redesign drainage such that it can be demonstrated that the development will not negatively, negatively impact drainage on East Main Street. Contingencies to address prior to issuance of a building permit, the landscaping plan, the required fencing changes, drainage, and provide a stormwater pollution protection plan, and then provide a final, a corrected final drainage report.
You got that taken care of?
We've got most of that, the landscaping plan, we have the landscaping that we put on the large-scale development, but now the process is to do the civil plans. That will identify the landscape in itself, and all of the fencing, and we've already agreed to the fencing and the screening.
Okay.
That was done at large-scale development.
Okay, any other questions? Did we have a motion?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garza.
Randy Campbell.
Uh, consideration of an ordinance to appro- approve the final plat for Sunrise Edition.
Make motion, we suspend the rule, read the title only with short explanation.
Second. Okay, that was motion to suspend by Mr. Wiley, and a second by Mr. Westcott, all in favor of the motion to suspend, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
In order to approving the final plat of Sunrise Edition Phase Two subdivision, accepting the dedication of the easements to the city of Russell, Arkansas, and for other purposes, this ordinance if passed would accept and approve the final plat of Sunrise Edition Phase Two subdivision, and accept the dedications, easements as shown on the plat that's, uh, attached as one of the exhibits.
Motion to adopt.
All right, we got a motion to adopt, and was that Mr. Brown saying, I second that? All right. Wanna call the roll?
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Mr. Westcott?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, uh, who's did, who did that plan? Garza, y'all need to give emergency clause on that?
No.
Okay.
I wasn't gonna give him no mercy clause.
All right, consideration of a resolution calling for a special election.
Motion.
All right, we got a motion from Mr. Brown. It's hard to get your name on the record, right? All right, motion, Mr. Brown, is it second, Mr. Westcott?
Seven thirty minute.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Discussion on item four.
What's the date we wanna, are we setting him, are we set the date?
That's a, that's a pretty good question.
That's why I ask.
Are we doing electronic election?
No, no, you can't.
Turns out that's.
Against state law.
You gotta do, do both.
Isn't this the one, you gotta go to the first?
I believe it's May the ninth, is it, Trey?
That's what it was set, that was the last time it was verbalized, to me. Everything's in the resolution.
If we do May ninth, and then we end up doing the.
Yeah.
This is for the vacancy, that we can, can we tag the two together if we?
If you want to.
If we want to?
Yeah.
Mayor, I, I was, Mayor, may I say something?
You sure can.
I was thinking about that piece of putting those two together, and, and this is just my opinion. I, I believe that if we, if it comes to a vote for this Arbor deal, I think it needs to be on a separate time, because the, most of the people in town are gonna be coming out for the election on Ward One, and people here in, in the, in the valley lower, down, Ward Two, Three, and Four, they're not gonna be concerned about the election on the hill, and they're not gonna, and it's, I'm afraid we're not gonna get the people out to vote on that Arbor deal. That's just my opinion, been thinking a lot about that. Because when you tie them both together, they say, well, that's for Ward One, that's for the city councilman. So people's not even gonna consider.
Well, and until we have that, until we have that meeting here, what, in a couple of weeks, in regard to that referendum.
Yeah, I don't think we need to tie them together yet.
I don't think we need to tie them together tonight. But the referendum, the petition said May the ninth, so if you wanna do this on a different date, then we need to move this one.
How long do you have?
Well, let's move this one up, can we move this one up?
Yeah.
Well, we may not, that other one may not happen.
That's right.
It's a matter of course.
Well, we have a candidate that has announced she's going to run for this position, and I think she's most anxious to get her signs ordered and know.
Yeah.
When to schedule and all this stuff, so I'd like for us to go ahead and set the date for the election for the council seat.
We could do it in April, couldn't we?
There's still time, you think?
I was looking to see if there's any deadlines. I think we have to have the same problem of no less than sixty days from.
Makes sense to me.
The issuance and the actual elections, you have to just have a sixty-day gap.
Well, let's leave it, it might not. No?
No, because the, uh, the deal about the Arbers was gonna be on May ninth, if it goes through, so, can we not just move this one to April? That's more than sixty days from now.
If they pass this tonight, we can notify them tomorrow, and we'd have February, March, you'd have.
The sooner the better.
And we'd have somebody on board sooner than later.
It's not that easy, because you have certain things you have to have in this resolution, which I filled, filled out, because they have to be filled out.
Yeah.
Uh, you have to look at, there's, the resolution has to show the time to circulate the petition, it has to state, uh, that deadline, it has to state. When you draw the ballot position. And then the election, and, you know, I've had to space that based on everybody saying May ninth, so now, if you're gonna move it up, then we have to change these other dates.
There's a lot to this lawyer and stuff, isn't it?
Yeah, I know.
Can, can we, can we take care of this on the twenty-fourth, when we decide for sure what we're gonna do in regard to the Arbers vote? Can we also decide on this the very same night?
Can, it's just to get, it comes down to, you have to have dates for what you pass. And if you wait on the twenty-fourth, we're not gonna be talking about dates.
Yeah, okay.
That's when they want to have the election for.
What do you think, is there, do it?
Can, can we amend what you've written here in this resolution tonight, and change the date?
You just need to go through it, make it all of them.
Okay, what, what date are we looking at, April?
Yeah, that's four months.
That's a long time, what?
I know that. I know. There's a lot to it.
Well, I'm about to move that we amend this resolution, and cha- changing the date as soon as he gives me a date here.
Okay, you have to have it on the second Tuesday, that is April eleventh.
April eleventh, okay.
April eleventh? Sounds good to me.
That sounds good.
So I move that we amend this resolution to change the date from.
May.
Whatever, from May ninth to April eleventh.
That's what days we're on. First change you're gonna have.
I'll second that.
Are y'all following Mr. Smith's discussion here, there's a.
Yes.
Okay, what else we gonna have to change? You're gonna have to do.
You're gonna have to go, like, the first change will be section four, it'll. Change that to April eleventh. Go to section five, have to change that, because the state law requires this. Uh, the time period for candidates to circulate petitions and nomination, I'd started the next day, and had it ending on February tenth at twelve noon. You can keep it the same if you wanna pass tonight, that gives you roughly three weeks, which is generally what the state law, when you file, is usually from sixty, eighty to sixty, or a hundred and twenty to a hundred before the normal regular election, so.
Okay.
That times, so if you wanna change it, now's the time to change it.
Let's change it.
To what, give them more time?
If you want to, or, you know, if it passes tonight, then the next day petitions can start being circulated.
I, I don't mind just leaving that date alone.
That's written now.
Yes.
Let's leave that alone.
And the deadline is February tenth noon, to turn it into the Hope County County Clerk's office. And that's section six.
That's good.
Okay.
All right, now, section eight, you have to also put in the resolution the date for the election commissions to do the drawing of the ballot position. That was April third, but if you're moving it up, you're gonna have to switch it probably in March.
Okay. What day in March?
See, this is the part where I don't know, they probably need early March to give them time to print up the ballots.
Should we make that March third?
That'll be a Friday, so yes, you could.
Okay, so in section eight, also in my motion to amend the, also in my motion to amend the date, uh, from May ninth to April eleventh, twenty seventeen, in section eight, to change that date from April three to March three, which is on a Friday.
And that'll be, that'll take care of it at that point.
I agree, second.
Can I ask a question?
Mr. Tripp?
Uh, is there a designated time of early voting? You know, uh, I had sent Ms. Harris something a couple of weeks ago, I mean, a couple of months back, just, I don't know, it was in some other town, but it was a special election, but they only had like three days of early voting, and, you know, that has a lot to do with the cost of this election that we incur.
Well, that was because it was Thanksgiving.
But I mean, so is there a set amount that we have to have, I mean, what?
Yes, it is set by law.
State law will do that, once we give them the dates, then they'll back it up.
So how many, how much time you gotta give them for early voting, a week?
A week.
Trey's answering that now.
Oh, okay.
The state law will dictate that, we just set the election, and then the state law gives the early voting for it.
Okay.
We don't have to set that.
Okey-dokey.
Okay, can we run through the changes one more time?
Section, sure, section fours would change from May ninth to April eleventh. Section five and six are the same. Section eight has changed to April third to March third.
Did everybody keep up with that?
What, what are we doing on March third, Trey?
You have to have the drawing of ballot position.
Got it.
So if there's more than.
They turn it in by a certain date, and then, then we do the draw immediately thereafter, okay.
Well, it, it just says you have to set the date when you pass this, and so.
Okay. Okay, now I talked to, um.
In both places?
Well, are we through? I don't wanna jump off on something, we voted on this, okay.
There's that commission thing, if, if they have some regulation conflict, that gives them the leeway to move it.
Okay, section eight, we're changing that April third to March third in both places. Any other discussion on that? Everybody's good?
I wanna make a comment when we get through, but I don't wanna muddy the water right here, it doesn't pertain to this, okay.
All right, so we're, we got a motion and a.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion, your.
Not yet, not yet, not yet, not yet.
Okay, regarding the election, uh, there's been discussion on whether we could go electronic or not go electronic, or paper or not go on paper. After, uh, the chairman of the commission chewed on me for a while, uh, it came, it came out like, uh, the council would set the dates, and then you bring those dates to the commission, and then the commission will discuss with, probably, she mentioned the mayor and Trey, I guess y'all do this all the time with her, and, uh, then they will discuss options, because, uh, there is a state ordinance that says you can't go all paper, you know, when you were talking about not doing the computers, there's a state law that says you have to have one computer, um, for handicap, so you have to program at least one machine, so it's very possible we could end up being able to go all computer,